For the appeal tonight, have appealed that Planning and Zoning Board decision already to the Superior Court, so they have that appeal pending. They're gonna have their opportunity to make their arguments to the judge that the Planning and Zoning Board shouldn't have granted that, but this is another, I guess, bite at the apple, or trying to double tap this with coming in now and appealing a zoning permit, which is an as of right issuance. The property is going to be, the plans show a property that is 100% FEMA compliant, where the previous structures were, I think, built in the 1920s or 30s, or whatever they were. This property's 100% building compliant, it will be when complete, and it's 100% zoning compliant. And it's 100% zoning compliant because it meets all of the regulations, yes, of the variances were denied for a setback, and the applicant came back in and brought in a fully 100% zoning compliant structure. And then the planning and zoning board approved it, and then the permit was issued. It was really, if the permit had not been issued, then there would have been a lawsuit brought, as called a writ of mandamus, which would have been asking a judge to force the zoning officer to issue the zoning permit that was rightfully theirs and that they were obligated to issue. So, you know, you have my memo, there's seven main points. You know, Joe Griffith, I think they, the applicant's attorney agreed at the beginning, you know, they conceded that he's a zoning enforcement officer, and there's no question whether he has the ability, but this is typically, I have these discussions with Stephen, I have these discussions with Joe, is this a non-conforming use, is it an expansion, is it not an expansion? And we, you know, this is consistent with how Planning and Zoning, the Planning and Zoning Board and the Planning and Zoning Office interpret these types of legal pre-existing non-conforming uses. So this is nothing out of the ordinary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a technical, a technical issue to report. The record button for Attorney Case's presentation was not operating at the time, so this item will have to be held open for the January 12th meeting, so that all parties can present their case again.
Whoa, okay.
I apologize for that, that's my fault.
Oh, okay. All right, how are we gonna move forward with this right now, then?
You can, someone needs to motion to table the meeting to the January 12th, or keep it open to the January 12th hearing.
Motion to table?
And hold, and hold open to January 12th.
Motion to table and hold till the 12th of January meeting.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on that. Actually, let me go, let me take one step back here this evening, okay? Item number one here this evening, Mr. Soto, who is a, one of the commissioners that would be voting on this this evening, is recused from this first hearing. Michael Casey will be sitting in this evening for Mr. Soto. So for our vote right now, I will ask that, you know, we have a motion, and we have a second on the motion, and we'll ask Ms. Ferranti for her vote.
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf for his vote. Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Ms. Valaket?
With the motion.
Mr. Casey?
With the motion.
I'm also with the motion, so we're gonna table this until our January meeting.
Once again, for everybody who's here for this item, if you just make sure that we have your email address, and we will send out the Zoom invite for the January 12th ZBA for this item.
Okay, all right.
Are you saying that we're going to do this all over again?
Unfortunately, Attorney Case, we have to, because the record button was not engaged for your entire presentation.
Why don't we do it right now?
Want to do it over again?
Yeah.
No, we're not, we're not going to do it.
We are entirely here to oppose.
We have a heavy agenda for this evening, we have four more applications, we don't have enough time to do it again.
I can appreciate that, I really can appreciate that, but how is that fair to us? I mean, I'm pleading, you know, Mr. Hirsch, you asked in, can you just sum this up in three simple words? All we're asking is, how is it that it's been allowed to build a two-family home in a one-family zone?
All right, so.
Simple, end of story. This is not fair to us, to push us off to January.
To stop you right now, then. Mr. Harris, we know definitely, none of this, that Mr. Case had been stating was recorded. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
So we've spent, we've spent an hour so far, we have, we don't have anything recorded on it.
We started recording about 10 minutes ago.
So where is that fair to us?
Hold on, Ms., I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna control this, okay? Just hold on till we make a decision on what we're gonna figure. I don't think we have enough time this evening to.
Well, then you might have to push the other people off.
Will you please, will you just? We're not gonna push the other people off right now either.
Right, because it wouldn't be fair. Why is this fair to us to push us off? Please, this has been going on way too long, this nonsense.
All right, all right, hold on, hold on. Can we move forward with this, Mr. Harris, with all the, what the commissioners know so far, or, or we can't?
Well, there was.
We do need it recorded for the record.
Yes, we do, we need it recorded for the record, there was a motion and a vote to table to January.
Then let's start recording again, please.
Wait, could I make the suggestion, sir?
Hold on, whoever's talking, we got too many people talking right now, who's talking right now?
Mr. Chairman.
This is Dr. McLeod, sir, could I make a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
My suggestion, could, could we give Attorney Case, if he's agreeable, 10 minutes to summarize his points for us, and that that would become part of the record, and then we could proceed tonight? We have, our entire neighborhood has been bullied on this proposal, and we're all here tonight to speak in favor.
Okay, hold on then, let me, let me ask the commissioners a question.
Can I ask?
Can I? Can I, commissioners, let me ask you a question, okay? Do you think you've had enough information from Attorney Case to conclude this hearing tonight? Do you, do you feel that we have enough that you want to either, either uphold or overturn this?
The answer is yes.
Yes, as well, I think yes.
You think you have enough information?
Yes, but I'm not voting, so I don't really, you know, but yes.
You're not, you're not, all right, so what we're gonna do then, Mr. Harris, I would like to give Mr. Case, as suggested, 10 minutes for a review, and let's record the review, and then we'll decide, the board will decide this evening, we'll either uphold this or overturn this decision.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, what if Mr. Case consents to that?
Mr. Hirsch, please do not just jump in, please.
Well, there's, there's two issues, two issues that we need to deal with. One, is there was, there was a vote to table this to January, so if the board wants to go forward, you're gonna have to take another vote to put it back onto the agenda for tonight. That's issue number one. Issue number, number two is the appellant has every right to present the case in the manner that he wants to present it, unless he wants to waive that, so those are the issues. So does the, does the board wanna go forward with this tonight from the very beginning, or wait to January?
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf, it looks like you're ready to say something.
I'm agreeable to re-table this and allow Max to give us a summary, and let's put this to vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay. All right, Mr. Case, Attorney Case, you're here for all of this? We're gonna take a vote on this right now? Okay, Ms. Valaket?
Well, motion to reopen.
Motion? We're gonna, Ms. Valaket?
Yes.
This was, we, we have a motion to hear this hearing again right now.
Okay.
Okay, you're in favor, okay?
And with, with the motion, we're gonna reopen it.
Ms. Ferranti?
Motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. Casey?
With motion.
I'm with the motion, okay. Attorney Case, it's all yours.
So let me just ask for a clarification from Mr. Harris, did you get anything that I said, or my, or did you get nothing that I said?
No, Mr. Case, you need to start over.
So you got?
None.
Okay.
I know this is really, I mean, it's really hard on you, Mr. Case, but do the best that you possibly can to, to summarize this, you know.
Well, the problem is, Mr. Chairman, I need to make a record, and I can't some, I, I, I don't think I can summarize in 10 minutes what it took me 50 minutes to say, I mean.
Can I make a suggestion?
That's just not possible, I mean, I could.
All right, we'll take, Mr. Lynch, we'll take an outside suggestion at this right now, sure.
Me too.
Can I, can I just interject for a second with all?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I think that items numbers two through five on your agenda are fairly brief, and if the, if Attorney Case wants to make a full presentation again, would the board entertain the thought of proceeding to items two through five, and then finish up with item number one?
Can I just jump in? Item five, Attorney Lynch, there's, there's considerable public comment that came in yesterday and today, so that may not work out quite that well, but the other items are certainly likely to be short. I know I'm not on the board.
Ma'am, we're not gonna let you talk right now, okay? You're not a commissioner, you're not doing any of the presentation right now, please.
I have a good suggestion, though.
You'll have a chance to talk, but, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask, in fairness to everyone, because I do wanna be able to make a record, and believe me, I don't wanna do the whole thing all over again, but could we continue this to another night next week?
I don't, I don't know if that's possible. Every Tuesday night is the, I don't know what you would have to do with the city to get that through.
It would be a Zoom meeting, it would be a special meeting, it would be a Zoom meeting.
The Planning and Zoning Board does meet next Tuesday.
On Tuesday, correct. Well, it would have to be a different evening. Is that possible, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, we can have a special, because we're meeting by Zoom, we're not at a physical location.
Okay.
So we can just have a Zoom meeting.
All right, what would you suggest, what would you suggest, what would the timeframe be to do this?
Well, special meetings, we need 24-hour notice. Calendar. Would? The 17th or 18th work?
The 17th is a Thursday?
Yep, would that work? 16th or 17th?
Commissioners, commissioners, take a look at your date, December 17th, will you be available?
I can do December 17.
And what time would it be, Mr. Harris, 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
Okay, all right, Mr. Casey, Ms. Ferranti said yes, Mr. Casey said yes, Ms. Valaket?
Yes.
Wolf's okay, 17.
And Mr. Wolf?
Yes, sir, okay.
I can do that, so we'll move it to December 17th, I hope that it pieces everyone, I know we'd like to get this done this evening, we, you know, we've had some out-of-the-ordinary things happening this evening, and I have to apologize for, everyone's made something, some kind of mistake here along the line tonight, so this is gonna be tabled then till December 17th, which is a Thursday, next Thursday, okay?
Motion, motion to table to the 17th?
Yeah, we, okay, we have, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, okay.
All right.
December 17th, 7 o'clock, all right.
Thanks, everybody, sorry about that, you waited long enough, so.
Okay, we'll move on, Ms. Ferranti, item number two.
Item number two, 8 Lawrence Avenue, MVP 28 slash 578 slash 4R5, Bryant Chatfield, agent for Phil and Debbie Lalande, owners, vary section 3.1, 0.4, 0.1, building area to 52.9%, where 45% is maximum permitted, lot coverage to 77%, where 65% is maximum permitted, rear yard setback to 12.5 feet, where 20 feet required.
Item number eight, Lawrence Avenue, speaking, please.
Yes, this is Bryant Chatfield, and I'm speaking on behalf of Phil and Debbie Lalande.
Okay, go ahead, sir, we need your address.
My address is 35 Verville Road, Avon, Connecticut. The address for the petition is 8 Lawrence Avenue.
We know that, okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
We are requesting a building area from 52.9, or 252.9, where 45 is a maximum permitted, and the lot coverage of 77%, where 65 is the maximum, and we're also requesting that a 12-foot 5, where 20-foot is required for a side yard setback.
Okay, would you like to give us a hardship on that, please?
Yes, what this is, it's an addition, the, the occupants now have a third-floor bedroom area, so they actually have to go up three floors, so it's an addition of a master bedroom area and living room area on the first floor, and a garage, so they can get off-street parking.
Will there be more occupants in this, because, because of this addition?
Yes, there will be, they will also have a, a mother-in-law who has ocular degeneration living with them.
Right, so you mentioned that you would be able to get more cars off the road because of this?
Correct, they're gonna be able now to park in the, in the lower garage area, if you look right, correct.
So, so, all right, so you have one more occupant, and you'd have no more cars?
No, she, unfortunately, she's unable to drive.
One of the concerns on that street is, I, you know, I, I know I've been down that street on a summer day, and there's absolutely no, no parking anywhere, so, you know, enlarging the house and bringing in more people would be certainly a concern.
No, she will, she would not have a vehicle, so.
All right, is there, are you, are you through, sir, with your, your part of the presentation?
Yes, I am, thank you for hearing me.
Anyone else speak in in favor of this application? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Okay, is there anyone here opposed to this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My name's Gordon Parmley, 101 Long Island View Road, I own property over in First Avenue, I'm opposed to this application due to the parking situation, the density of the homes there, and when they say there'll be off-street parking, I just went up that street two hours ago, and you're zigzagging between the cars if there's somebody coming the other direction. You gotta realize, most of the, that's a 45-foot lot, and there's probably two 45-foot lots on that street, and the rest are 30-footers, this opens a can of worms for, for the neighborhood, and that's my opposition to it, all I have to say, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you for your comments, is there anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, what was it, Mr. Chatfield?
Yes.
Okay. What are your comments, you can rebut what was said?
Again.
I have another, I have, also have another question for you, is this considered, is it, is it an addition, or is it an accessory apartment kind of thing, because there, there are no other, that I'm aware of, units like that on that street?
No, it's, it's basically just an addition of new living space.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Chatfield?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ferranti?
Yes, Sarah Ferranti speaking, I'm, I'm looking at the elevations, the garage doors are at the rear of the house.
Correct, Sarah.
Not on the side, okay, so looking at then, what, a 30-foot deep garage?
It's not the depth of the garage, the garage itself is, is a standard size, it's about 22 by 25.
I'm just.
Standard garage.
I'm just wondering why you can't shorten that up a little bit, because you, you know, for the zone, the minimum lot depth is 70 feet, you have a 111-feet-deep lot, and you're going into the rear yard setback, I don't understand why you can't shorten that up and eliminate that variance request.
For the rear lot?
Yeah, at the very least, yeah, the rear yard setback.
Right, so if you, if you look at that connector in between the house area there, you'll see it right there, Sarah, where you go up the set of stairs up into, into the, into their study area?
Yeah.
And that's open, open to the back area there, because there's mechanical storage and mechanical units in that area, because there's not really a backyard to that, so it's basically from underneath, it's a, it's a causeway to get to the back of the house to get to that, it's about a four-foot strip, and even less on the existing house, it's about two-foot five.
But we're talking about the backyard, not the side yard.
Correct, but that's why you asked why the garage is extended so far out, there's about a, there's about a 12-foot opening underneath, there's existing storage in the house, that's how they get into their basement area.
But this.
Correct.
I'm looking at.
Yeah, right, right where you're showing it, Sarah, if you look, if you were to go back into there, that's to the, to the left-hand side, you'll see that there's a, there's a man door there, and that's how they're, they get into their storage area, their garage, they have no storage in this house per se, because that first floor is an entrance way into the house, then you go up another floor, which is basically the kitchen area, the dining room area, then you go up to the third floor, which is, is the, the living quarters, and there's no attic. So that existing area.
On the side of the house, not on the back of the house.
Correct.
Okay, I thought they were on the back, so, I mean, I understand the desire to have off-street parking in a neighborhood like this.
Right.
The house as it exists is already very large, you're asking for a rear yard setback as well as building area and lot coverage variances, which we tend to shy away from, if you change that to a one-car garage, you could probably eliminate all of those variances, you would still have a one-car garage off the street, and you could create more driveway for off-street parking without having building area coverage variance.
Right, and, and one thing, Sarah, that had come up, and, and part of the reason why this design was put forth was, it was our understanding that it was a through lot, so that that was actually gonna be a front yard on the other side, on the opposing street, but I guess what was found is there's a very small strip of property that's owned by the Beach Association that's there, so.
That doesn't really address the idea of just building less and not asking for variances. What is the hardship? You can still get off-street parking without building more square footage into the house and asking for more lot coverage, more building area, and a rear yard.
Well, they're, I mean, their hardship is trying to get their master bedroom downstairs and not having it up three flights of stairs is basically what they're looking at, you know, they're, they're older, they're, you know, they're getting older, like myself, and you tend to not wanna go up that many flights of stairs, so putting the, you know, putting the bedroom in and putting an office area in there is, is what they propose to, and I'm sure you're aware of that area, it's very dense, they're, even with this addition, it's not gonna be as bad as some of the houses that are in that area, they have huge pools and garages and pretty densely packed area.
It is very dense, and I think that this application makes it even denser, and I, while I can appreciate not wanting to walk up three flights of stairs to go to bed, that doesn't seem like a hardship of the land to me.
Right, but they're also gonna have a mother-in-law that's going to be there with them too, and they wanna try to be on that first floor with them.
Mr. Chatfield, what is, what is the square footage of that house right now?
Um, I think the approximate square footage of that house now is somewhere around 3,000 square feet.
And three people in there?
Correct, correct.
Any other questions, commissioners? We already had, we had opposition, no one else is speaking.
Mr. Chairman, both soda.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
I, I agree with Sarah on everything she said, she makes a lot of valid points, that's odd, like, I think they can redesign this and eliminate quite a few of those variances.
Okay, sounds good, all right, are we prepared to make motion?
I am.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ferranti.
Motion to deny.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, and we have a second on the motion, Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Ms. Valaket? Ms. Valaket?
With the motion.
Okay, I'm with the motion tonight. Okay, item number three, please.
Item number three, 0 Concord Avenue, MVP 24 slash 207 slash 10RO, Richard Gustafson, agent for Pete Genatino, owner, vary section 3.1, 0.4, 0.1, rear yard setback to 22.3 feet, where 25 feet required to construct a new single-family house.
Item number three, you're speaking, please. 0 Concord Avenue, go ahead, please. You're muted, Richie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is Rich Gustafson, I'm agent for Pete Genatino, 0 Concord Ave, I live at 786 Derby Milford Road in Orange, Connecticut.
But.
Okay, Mr. Genatino has owned this property for a very, very long time, always dreamed about building his retirement house there, and a preliminary plot plan that was given to me before we designed the house showed it as a, basically a square building lot, 85 deep, 80 wide, so the house was designed for the first floor to be basically slab-on-grade garage slash workshop, storage area, no basement, and then the whole living space was just on one floor above, as last week, Pete Genatino is, you know, now a senior citizen, he's gonna be retiring soon, the house was also designed with, you know, like a formal stairs in the front entrance of the house, there's a second stair in the back, because Pete and his wife are gonna be taking care of his in-laws, who are very elderly, and they need a lot of, or the stair chair assist for them going up in the back, that's why there's another secondary straight stairway going up, so they wanted to keep the whole living space just on that one floor, if all possible, because to go up another flight, you know, with them being new senior citizens, but also taking care of the elderly, you know, it's not really conducive, the setback is only, the 22.3 is on the right rear corner, it's a triangular sliver that. It's a triangular sliver that's over the setback line. You know, the left side of the house is is within the setback. So that's the hardship that, you know, the lot is also, you know, it's in our 7.5 zone, but existing lot as is was only about 68, 6,698 square feet. Slightly smaller than what's the minimum required in the zone. But he's owned the lot for many, many years.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So we're only have one small variance, correct?
That's it. Just that setback from the rear and it's like a triangular sliver that's a setback.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gustafson? Any questions? Is there anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
I would like to.
Go ahead, please.
My name is Anita Stabler-Hussie and I live at 20 Concord Avenue, which is next door to where they want to the lot. I have no problem with what they want to do. I know the properties are on a little bit of an angle, all of them are. So as far as I'm concerned, they're great neighbors. They've been there forever. And I think that what they want to do is is appropriate. So we're not, I'm not objecting to it at all. And I'm right next door to where they're building.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else here this? Is there anyone here this evening that's opposed to this application? Any opposition? Commissioners, any more questions on this? Zero Concord Avenue? Okay, this hearing is closed. Okay. Your thoughts, please? One small variance? If you look at the property, Chris Wolf's small comment, it's it's the right side to do. It's the correct orientation for this addition. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or motion?
I just want to say that, you know, that like, in contrast to the last application, again, it's another rear yard setback, but here you do have an undersized depth as opposed to the last one where it was an extra-large depth and it is just in one corner. It doesn't run throughout the length of the house. The other end of the house is compliant, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, all right, who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve based upon the variance in this in the lot size or based upon the hardship in the lot size.
Give me a second. Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferrante?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Ms. Valaket?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's a great. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Item number four, 47 Cherry Street, MVP 66 slash 817 slash 16 RO, Tony Tesquire for MD Acquisitions, owner, vary section 3.1.4.1 to to allow mixed-use building with 59% residential use square footage where maximum permitted is 50%.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickian Boynton, and my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight presenting an application for my neighbors, Mark and Deena Lieberman. Mark and Deena have a real estate office that's located at 47 Cherry Street. It's owned under their company named MD Acquisitions LLC. And as Sarah read the the variance request, it's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. We're seeking a variance to allow renovation of the second and third floor, mostly the the third floor attic area of 47 Cherry Street to allow my clients to have a apartment on the second and third floor consisting of two bedrooms and two baths. Just a little bit of background history, the property is located in the RO zone, which allows mixed use of buildings, but section 31, excuse me, section 34313 subsection 2 limits the size of the residential use in the building to no more than 50%. So Stephen is going through the plans. I was going to share the screen, but Stephen's doing a pretty good job. Steve, if we could go back just to the site plan itself. My clients initially had a plan to try to do some development in the rear area of the property. It's a it's a very narrow lot located on Cherry Street. This particular stretch is Cherry Street, even where my office is located. The properties are narrow and very deep. So the existing structure, which was built back in the 1920s, is located in the front area, just setback off of Cherry Street. There is a detached garage in the rear. And, you know, at first they wanted to do some development where they could add on to the the structure to the rear or even demolish the garage and put a second building in the rear, but the narrowness of the lot prohibits that, especially from an access point of view for fire apparatus. So basically, they're going to keep their offices on the first floor. Stephen, if we could go to the floor plans that are right after, here we go. So the layout of the building as it is now, their architect has shown you on these plans. Their offices for the real estate office is on the first floor. There's a current use of the second floor as office space. There had been a prior apartment up there. There is a kitchen on the second floor, but they had been using the second floor for additional office space. But now what they want to do, they have a property management business as well as their real estate sales business. So they're going to seek additional office space for the property management, and they want to turn the second and third floor of the structure into an apartment. And basically, turn the first, the second floor back into the first area of the apartment, meaning the kitchen and living room with a bedroom. And then the plans call for a dormer to be built out in the attic area and a second bedroom and a second bath to be put on the on the third floor. And Stephen, if you can scroll to the next sheet, that's really the telling sheet that shows why we're here tonight because the architect has put through, that's that's the elevation. I think the next sheet down. There you go. So that sheet says it all. That lays out the per-floor use of the building. It shows that the first floor has 718 square feet of commercial space, and then there's 702 square feet on the second floor. And the attic expansion would then bring the total square footage of the residential use to 1,049 square feet. So doing the simple math, adding everything up and then putting it on a ratio basis, it comes to 49%, excuse me, 59% being used for residential use and a little over 40% used for commercial use. Now, this stretch of Cherry Street, you know, going back many, many years, this was a residential area. And then in the 80s and 90s, the zoning regulations were changed to allow for residential office use. But there has been other properties, especially comes to mind, number one Cherry Street, where an application was presented a couple of years ago to convert that building from the dental offices on the first floor to 100% residential use, and that application was granted. So we feel that, you know, this is pretty much a a minimal request. You know, 59% versus the 50% that's required under the regulations as a maximum use. So we submit to you that it's reasonable, especially in light of the fact that it is in the downtown area. And very simply, we'd ask that you grant this application. Happy to answer any questions if any board members have any.
Hey, board members, questions for Attorney Lynch?
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, Tom, I'm a little confused by the math on the last page.
Yeah.
You're showing the attic floor square footage being less than half of the second floor, but once you add that real that dormer that basically goes the whole length of the building, that third floor is the same amount is is much closer to the same amount of square footage on the second floor than you have listed here, which would shoot that percentage way up.
Well, that's just pushing the roof line out, Sarah. It's not increasing the square footage of the floor space.
Well, it allows, it it does because it allows that to be more usable space.
Well, you can hit your head on the ceiling or not hit your head on the ceiling, one way or the other. The calculation for square footage really goes based on the floor plan and not the roof line?
Oh, well, based on the floor plan, I'm looking at, they look to be the same-sized space. They've got the same floor plan, so they should be the same square footage, which again would make it more like 2/3 residential, 1/3 commercial.
Well, my only response to you is that those plans were put together by a licensed architect, so you know, this, I have to, I have to go by the numbers that he has there.
Um, what's going in? You you have a note. I'm trying to find, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my link here. Um, where's the second bedroom going? You have one bedroom on the second floor. I don't think I saw where there was going to be a second bedroom.
Yeah, the second bedroom is going to go on the third floor.
Where?
In that area off to the left. You come up the stairs and there's a open area there. I guess that's going to be a dressing room. And then on the other side, that area is going to be finished off as a bedroom.
All the way in the back of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it seems that.
It says existing unfinished storage area.
Yeah.
And that's that's the area where they're going to put that room.
Yeah, it seems. It doesn't seem to me like that attic space is less than half the square footage of the second floor. I'm just that those numbers don't seem to make much sense to me.
Are you all set, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, I have a question. Why is there only, if that's going to be living space on the third floor, why is there only one small window in that side dormer?
I'm looking at the rear elevation, Joe. There's a window in the back. Then there's going to be one additional window on this. If you look at the left side elevation, there's going to be one additional window in that dormer. And then there are existing three windows on the front. So there's actually one, two, there'll be three windows on the third floor. Three window areas.
Yeah, well, again, I mean, it's pretty broad across the whole roof with, you know, one small window. It's just like, if it's going to be a complete living area, it's going to be a complete apartment. I guess that is the
The entire.
The function for the whole building. That's that's going to be it. There's going to be commercial on one floor and two apartments above.
No, there's going to be one apartment above, Joe. One apartment.
Second floor is, second floor is going to be residential.
Yeah, and then there's, it's all, the second and third floor is all going to be one apartment.
You're not going to have two different tenants, one and one on the second floor and one on the third floor.
Correct.
You are, you are, right?
One tenant, correct.
Oh, one tenant for both those second floors, okay.
Yeah, it's all going to be one apartment.
I see, okay.
Uh, Joe, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Attorney Lynch, Bill Soda. You know, the dormer, you have seven foot seven, so it's not like you're going to hit your head on it. So, you know, Sarah does make a point on that, us, that the square footage does seem low. I mean, I've been doing this for a long time and that 300 and change seems low. I don't know how your architect came up with that.
Yeah, and and as a contractor, you know, my response to you is going to be, I have these plans that are that are owned by an architect. I mean, I don't know.
I I understand that, but when you put the dormer all the way, you are picking up all that floor space and you're putting the egress window in, and that's that's all becoming a bedroom. So you got that whole back area that's a bedroom. That's a huge bathroom. That's got to be a 12 by 12 bathroom. And then you've got that front room, the sitting room there, or the TV room, it says, so.
Yeah.
Seems like you're well over, you know, closer to 500 feet, I would think.
So the actual total square footage would be more than we have stated. So the percentage would be up.
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanted, you know, point that out.
Well, I don't want to have any questions on your part. Again, I'm repeating, we have myself saying that I'm making a presentation to you with architectural plans. If you want to table this to the next meeting and I can have the architect explain the floor plan, I'd be happy to do that. I'd rather not leave it so that you're thinking that the there's something scant here. Is that, is that enough?
That's that's a fair statement.
Sarah?
So we would either, we either table it or we would deny without prejudice.
And I see my client, Deena Lieberman, is waving her hand, so maybe she wants to weigh in. Deena, you want to unmute and?
All right, who else is speaking then? Who else?
This is, this is my client, Deena Lieberman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Deena Lieberman. I also do a lot of design work, interior design, construction, project management. As you walk up the stairs to the second floor, so the stairs are, the second floor is setback from the porch. As you walk up the stairs, there's a chimney in the center of the building that that takes away square footage. You walk into a very small front room on the third floor. Now, this is coming up from the second floor, a very small front room that is maybe yeah, it's pre-existing up on the third floor. It is, it's, like I say, if you used it as a dressing room, that's asking a lot. And then the the chimney actually is in the very center of the space, so you lose at least a four-by-four area there. When you come into the front area, you have two wings that come out to the side currently for a little, an egress window on the as I'm standing on the street, on the right side of the street. So if we dormer the roof up, you're still only working with your existing, the existing room, which it's unfinished, but on the right side of the of the back of the room, because we're keeping the dormer there, it's unused space. We're going to, it's a very gabled roof and we're going to put a wall in five feet from the, as I'm looking at the back of the building now up, we're putting a wall in at least like five feet in so that we will not be able to use that. Yeah, where your little arrow is, that's going to be spaced off. So the front room may be as a finished space. We're having a stall shower uh, and a little small sink and a toilet. We'll just be able to fit that into the bedroom area right next to where the the chimney is. Uh, it's not a 12 by 12 bathroom by any means. It's much smaller than that. And the existing, the the non-existing bedroom space will end up being maybe maybe 10 by by 10, if 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 that. Uh, it it's just, it's, part of the room is going to be taken away because of our wall we're building where the extremely gabled roof comes down. It's 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 hard to explain, but the second floor looks big and wide and spacious. The third floor is quite tiny. Those numbers are pretty much true to form. So I.
Unfinished attic.
Unfinished attic space. It's it's like, it's like an attic that we're making in with a bedroom and a little bathroom up there and just your entry room, which is called the existing TV room. It's like your little entryway into it. It is quite small. It's very deceiving. I guess when you look at that second floor is where the 740 square footage is, but when we're looking at that third floor, you're really hindered by the encroachment of the dormer, the roof and the gabled roof.
So what is what is the actual size then of the bathroom upstairs? I'm looking at it here on the blue.
Uh.
And it's showing a shower stall way in the corner. It's showing a toilet across from it, and there's a big space between the vanity in the toilet. So if if this room is so small.
Yeah, he, it even looks to me like.
Spread out like that.
It looks to me like he pushed out the wall a little bit too far because I was under the understanding that that wall where your hand is was coming back closer to where the sink is. To where the chimney, there's a line across the whole center of. To where the chimney, there's a line across the whole center of the, of the, of the drawing.
Yeah.
We were going to stop the wall really right at that chimney and bring that sink over a tiny bit closer to the toilet. I don't know why he has a wall out that deep.
Well, that's why it seemed like it was twelve by twelve because, you know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but it's not going to be quite that big because then that really.
Okay. I understand now.
Yeah, so all, all it's going to be is.
I mean, it's, it's enough for a bedroom, a small bathroom, and then that. Coming up the stairs, the entry sitting room, they call it, but it's, it too has gabled area.
And if I can, if I can jump in too, Bill, I'm, I'm scaling this. It's, it's basically a. A quarter of an inch equals a foot. And it, it is not that big. And then there's a fairly substantial area that's lost with the stairwell going up. And there's that chimney area in the middle of the room, which, you know, obviously cuts down the usable.
Um, where it says existing unfinished storage area, there's a, there's a line with a number. I can't see that number. What's that number? Is that nine feet there? Nine, okay.
Nine.
So that bathroom is probably about nine also.
Right. Okay.
You'd want that bedroom bigger than nine feet.
And, and again, I mean, uh, Toddland, I've worked with him before. He's a good architect. I mean, I, I have, I have to stand by his numbers that he has here on this.
You know what I love about architects? Why don't they put measurements on it?
I, 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 I get you.
It happens all the time. I'm like, where's the measurements? You know, they tell you if there's no measurement, scale it, but then, you know.
Well, I just hope, I just happened to notice the scale of the bob and a quarter of an inch equals a foot, so.
And they all, they all love to not put numbers on them.
All right, anyone else speaking in favor? Any questions for Dina or Mr. Attorney Lynch? Commissioners, any other questions? Did I ask for opposition? I don't think I did. Anyone here opposed? Anyone opposed? This hearing is closed. Okay. Commissioners? Do we solve some of the questions, some of the?
Joe, Bill Soda, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Um, all my questions were answered.
Okay.
Uh, Chris Wolf, real quick, as we're discussing this, if you've, if you're considering square footage on, on a third floor. Will you have the, the framing or the slope of this gable diving way, way down? So say you have twelve or sixteen inches of, of floor to the rafters. Is that considered, is that calculated in as a square footage?
No.
It's not. Okay.
No. You gotta have like over six feet, six feet of space. That's where they start the count.
Then I understand.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we need a motion. Who would like to make a motion to?
I make a motion approved.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Second?
Second the motion?
Okay. Motion approved. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Ms. Valakat? Ms. Valakat?
With the motion, with the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
All right, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number five, fifty-nine Hillside Avenue. M B P forty-nine slash seven twenty-four slash two R five. Thomas Lynch Esquire for Nicholas Aquilina owner. Very section three point one point four point one. Side yard setback to six point three feet where ten feet required. Four point one point four south side projection to two point five feet where eight feet permitted for first floor walkway with rails.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, uh, just for the record, Thomas Lynch, uh, on this application. Um, representing my clients, Nick and Denise Aquilina. Uh, my clients are the contract purchasers of the property at fifty-nine Hillside Avenue. And, uh, uh, very simply, they're before you with a, a side yard variance request. Uh, request to vary section three one four one, the side yard variance, uh. On one side of the house in the R five zone from ten feet required to six point three feet. And then similarly, the, uh, projection, uh, variance, uh, section four one four. For the walkway on the side of the house, uh, in that zone, uh, there's five feet that's permitted. We're seeking a variance of the, uh, projection, uh, into the side yard to two point five feet. So just by way of background, the, the board should be very familiar with this property. It was the subject of a very lengthy. Uh, presentation that had been made to you, uh, a couple of times over the years. Uh, I had represented the prior owner at one point. Uh, Attorney Crusaden took a, an appeal to the Superior Court. And a decision was rendered by Judge Berger, uh, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, overturning the action of this board from denying the, uh, variance request that had been made at that time. Uh, for the variance of the height restriction. And I'm not going to get into the, uh, the whole background of the court case. It spoke for itself. Basically, um, the issues that were at play in that court appeal are not at play here. My clients, uh, are submitting plans to you to, uh, rebuild on this property. The, the prior residence was destroyed by, uh, Superstorm Sandy back in two thousand and twelve. The prior residence had, was a non-conforming structure. It had, uh, encroachments on the side yard. It also had a, uh, detached garage which, uh, infringed on the front yard setback. On Hillside Avenue. So the, uh, building that we're submitting to you tonight or the building plans that we're submitting to you tonight. Uh, basically are, uh, aesthetically. Flat out aesthetic, aesthetically beautiful. Uh, and the, uh, building is also in conformity with the other. Many homes that were rebuilt along that stretch of Hillside Avenue after, uh, after both Irene and Sandy. Uh, it's a narrow lot and that, of course, is the claim for our hardship. It's a narrow, non-conforming lot. It consists of some four thousand five hundred square feet in an R five zone. Uh, the lot measures thirty-five feet by a hundred and thirteen feet. And the request is to build a house that conforms with all of the zoning requirements in terms of length. It, uh, situates the house in the center of the lot. So now it conforms with, uh. Uh, the other houses that have been rebuilt. It, uh, eliminates prior non-conformities. Uh, again, uh, by state law, that is a, uh, clear reason for Zoning Board of Appeals to. Uh, grant a variance on a rebuild. And, uh, because of the narrowness of the lot, my clients, uh, are requesting, uh, the ability to construct a twenty-four foot. White house, which is totally reasonable. It conforms with not only other rebuilt houses on, uh. Hillside Avenue, but, uh, as well as, uh, houses in the East Broadway area or the, uh. Uh, uh, Broadway area. Many, many times we've come before you with, uh, plans such as this. And, uh, all we're seeking here is a, a side yard variance of one of the side. Uh, side yards from ten feet to six feet. And on the other side, there's going to be a walkway, uh, based on the plans, uh, that runs along the, uh. Uh, westerly side of the, uh, the residence. Steven is going through the elevations there. You can see the beautiful, uh, architectural work that's, uh. Going to go into this house. It's going to be typical. Uh, three, three level house with the first level being the lower foundation with the breakaway walls that are conforming to, uh. The FEMA regulations. Uh, as I'm sure all of you are aware, we're going to have to go from, uh. Uh, this board, if the variance is granted, to the Planning and Zoning Board to seek coastal area management approval. Uh, a site plan and special permit to, uh, construct the house because it is within the, uh. Uh, jurisdictional setback for a, uh, special permit. The, uh, Steve, if you could scroll just down next to the, uh. Floor plans, if we could. And again, this is going to be a typical, uh, uh, newly constructed house along the, uh, the beach area. There'll be the garage, uh, on the lower level. There'll be the first floor level with most of the living area. Uh, you know, in terms of the, uh, uh, living space, an open floor plan with a kitchen and, uh, dining area. And then on the, uh, uh, second living area, there's going to be a master bedroom suite, uh, with two other bedrooms and, uh. And bathrooms. So, you know, I know that Meg said at the outset, uh, there was. Or there are people that have submitted letters in opposition to this. I believe most of them are just opposed to the fact that. After all this time, a house is going to get built on this lot and people may lose their water views and, uh. Uh, unfortunately, that's, you know, uh, not grounds for, uh, uh, the board to deny. The grounds for the board to deny would be if there was a finding of no hardship. And I have submitted to you that there is a hardship with the, uh, plans submitted here. Uh, because the narrowness of the lot and as well, there's grounds for granting the variance because the plans. Do reduce and eliminate prior non-conformities. Uh, so that's it. My clients are on here as well. If, uh, there's any questions that are presented that I can't answer. But it's a pretty straightforward recall, request. Now that this has gone through the, uh, uh, court process. Uh, my clients want to buy this property and build and, uh, add in, an additional beautiful house to that stretch of, uh, Hillside Avenue. So thanks very much.
Mr. Lynch, I have a question for you because this is one of the last things you just said that, uh. The, this, of course, there was a non-conforming structure there before. You said this cuts down and even the, the, what, what the measurements used to be.
Correct. The prior, it's, it's my understanding.
The other house that was there was wider. So we're, so we're actually building on a smaller footprint here.
That's, that's true. And also the easterly setback from the prior house. Uh, I believe was some two or three feet off of the property line. Uh, this centers the house more. There's a legally conforming setback on one side and we're seeking the variance. Um, for the ten foot side. And in addition to that, there was the detached garage that was located right, uh, right on. Uh, we're within the setback, uh, of Hillside Avenue.
All right, the garage that's right there that belongs to that piece of property.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Attorney Lynch? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Bill Soda.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Soda.
Mister, Mister Lynch, um, what's the width of the walkway?
Uh, it's.
I couldn't see it on the plan. The number was too small.
I think it's seven feet, Bill. Seven feet?
No, it can't be seven feet.
I thought it was. All right. I can't see the plans because, yeah, there you go.
Seven feet.
If Stephen can share the, the screen with me, I can get them larger on my screen. I, I can't.
Tom, if you want to, if you want to share your screen, you can.
All right, hold on. Let me just see if I need to because I may have. Yeah, let me, if I could, Steve, because then I can enlarge it on my screen.
All right, I'll, I'll stop sharing and, um, go ahead.
All right. How's that? But, yeah.
I saw six.
All right. So I have this on my screen now. So let me enlarge.
That's the other house.
That's, that's the last one.
Yep, sorry. That's the last one. Gotcha.
That was Cherry Street.
We got the same plans I do, Tom.
Hey, I didn't talk.
It's okay, Mr. Lynch, spend one of those evenings.
Oh, I'm telling you.
Steven, did you hit the record button?
It's going.
I texted Captain Christine. I said, I better ask Steve to hit the record button. All right, let's see. Uh, nine feet?
No, it's four feet.
I'm looking at this, this number right here.
That's, that's a different measurement.
Okay.
Wide. Right, right to the, to the right of nine feet, you see four feet.
Oh, right there. Okay. Yep. Billy, you see that?
That's a covered porch.
Yep. Yeah, but the walkway is under it. Actually, it's even better. Look, there you go. Four foot first floor walkway. Right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the, go back to the elevation. Is that access into the house to?
Uh.
The door into the house from there?
We'll find out. Right there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is right there. Okay?
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, I believe we're at. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Steven, you want me to un, unshare my screen?
Sure, if you want to, yeah.
Okay, I'm out.
All right. Anyone else in favor? All right, do we have anyone opposed? If you ever opposed, please come forward.
Yes.
Okay, identify yourself, please. Your name and your address, please.
Uh, this is Paul Droste from sixty-four Hillside Avenue.
And I'm Wendy Droste, same address, sixty-four Hillside.
Go ahead.
Um, so yes, uh, I'd like to speak against the motion. Um, I don't see that this is an unusual, uh, hardship to build a house that conforms, uh, with existing, uh, zoning. Um, the lot is small, but there's enough room to build, uh, to build a, a nice sized house there. Um, and, uh, that would conform with the zoning, uh, and wouldn't, uh, and wouldn't require a variance. Um, I think that, um, building a house that's excessively wide on this lot. Uh, will affect the character and appearance of the neighborhood and would detract for it, from it. And so for those reasons, I think you could enjoy the property. The buyers know what the property size is. They could build a house that appropriately conforms to zoning and still enjoy full, uh, full use and of the property.
Okay, you'd like to speak, ma'am?
Um, I, I simply just agree with, uh, my husband's comment.
Okay, any, all right, anyone else speaking in opposition?
Yes, I'd like to speak, please.
Go ahead.
I live at forty-six Hillside Avenue. My name is Denise Warzoljak. I agree with that former person who just was speaking, that just come down on the size of the house. And you can sit on the lot properly. This, the variance is going to go right into the park. So when there's people in the park. They're going to be, um. In each other's space. I mean, there, there, people take their, their kids there, their dogs there, and I don't want to hear people. Complaining about activity in the park because they're encroaching on their property. Scale down the house. And as far as the view is concerned, that's nonsense. When living on Hillside Avenue with what's been going on over the past ten, fifteen years. Our, our views have changed with, with all this construction. But we're all living in a safer place now because of the construction. So the view enter, entering into it is not an issue on Hillside Avenue. We all know what it's like to live on Hillside Avenue. We lived through enough of these storms. So I do object. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, my response to the.
Can I just interrupt? This is the clerk again.
Sure.
Um, Joe, can you just make note of the number of emails that were received?
Okay.
Less the two folks that have.
All right, let's see what if to count them up. I think. I believe you had around nine. Hold on, I'll get, I'll get you an exact count.
I think it's eight, um, not including the three.
It's eight, it's eight. Okay. All right, so we did have eight letters of, um. Do you have that in front of you, Sarah?
I do, yes.
You do. Should we name the people? Or we just have eight? We have eight, eight separate letters in opposition.
We have, we have eleven names here, three of which have spoken.
Okay. So we have eight more.
Like.
For, for various reasons, of course, but they're all in opposition. Okay. All right, Meg, we have that for the record. Eight opposed. We don't usually read each one when we, we have the record. But at least we made it known that there is, uh, eleven, eleven, uh, in opposition.
Yeah.
Right now. Any other questions? Mr. Lynch had some rebutting or you all set, Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, no, my point of. Yeah, no, my point of rebuttal is quite honestly that these variances requested. You know, it's, it's reasonable. The house is reasonably sized at twenty-four feet. It's a narrow lot and the house is perfectly centered. There's five point seven feet off of the easterly adjoining property. There's six point five feet that's off of the city property on the other side. The city property is a park. It's an open area. So in fact, the house on the westerly side does not encroach on a, on a residence. It's, it's got an open space there. It's a city open space. So even more of a reason to look at this as not infringing on the neighborhood because of the fact that there aren't two residences on either side of the, of the property. But again, the effort was made here to situate the house properly on the lot. And again, I'm repeating myself, but we're eliminating a prior non-conformity, reducing another prior non-conformity. And again, we have the court case to back up the fact that the prior variances that were sought on the plans that were submitted by the Turks. Those plans included side yard variances as well. And the board had no problem with that. The board's only problem on the Turk application was the height of the building. This building is completely compliant with the height regulations. It's some thirty-three point six inches as measured from the average mean grade. So this is actually an improvement over the prior plans that were submitted to you and approved by the court. So I, I stand by that. Thank you.
Okay. Do you think, I mean, this is, you know, a question you really don't want me to ask you, but you think there's any more room for any, to downsize a little bit more?
There's no problem with the length of the house, Joe. And, you know, twenty-four feet, you, you see these plans every month. I mean, twenty-four is pretty much the standard width of a house in the R five zone. So.
Well, I mean, you know, sooner or later, a house is going to be built there. You know, it's, it's just a matter of trying to make things favorable for, for everyone. That's, that's usually our objective, you know.
And in these types of applications, and I've handled plenty of them, usually it's the length of the house or the situating the house further back towards the water. Where you have neighbors that are opposing it because there's, their sight lines, well, are going to be infringed. And that's not the case here.
Nothing you can do about that.
Right, right.
Good, Mr. Sodda.
Attorney Lynch, I just want, just want to make one comment on that. I built the house on Point Beach Drive, direct waterfront. It was a thirty-five foot lot and the owners did not want to go for a variance. We kept five feet on one side, ten feet on the other. And the owner wanted to be able to walk on a walkway to the back of the house. We built a two foot walkway because we were allowed twenty percent into the ten feet. So it can be done. I'm just, you know, whether it's, you know. It was a twenty foot house on a thirty-five foot lot with no, no variances needed.
I, I, I think you can build a fifteen foot wide house if you wanted to. But I, I think that this was, you know, the floor plan that the clients were looking for and the fact that it is conforming in, in conformity with all the other houses that have been built down there.
Well, my only point is with all the neighbors' opposition, there's a little bit of room for some leeway there. You know, maybe not twenty-four, you go down to twenty-two. Maybe make the walkway three and a half feet or three feet. You know.
I, I agree with.
Okay.
All right, who's, who's speaking now? Ms. Ferranti?
Yes, Sarah Ferranti.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We've seen a lot of houses out the waterfront. We've been doing this for years. We, twenty-four is a narrow house, but we routinely approve twenty foot wide houses because of narrow lots. So there is room to come down. And if I recall, we do this on East Broadway all the time. There was a house on East Broadway a few years ago that also had a walkway on the side. That was a point of serious contention in the neighborhood. And I, I believe it was not approved in the end. I, you know, all of, they're very narrow lots. They're very narrow houses. They've all got porches on the back. You know, I think that there's room for the house to be made more narrow, but I'm also not necessarily seeing the need for the walkway.
Okay. Can I just make one response to that, Sarah?
Yeah.
And you know that I handle a lot of these applications and a lot of those lots down there are not thirty-five feet. In other words, this is a twenty-four foot wide house, but it's on a thirty-five foot wide lot. And there's a lot of lots down there that are thirty feet. So in other words, the variance request many times are holding a two foot setback or a three, three foot setback. Here we have the conforming setback on one side and we're seeking a variance to be six feet off of a ten foot setback. So, you know, if the board, I'll accept whatever your decision is. And if, if I'm hearing that you want to take a vote and ask us to come back with a sharpened pencil, we'll have to live with that. But I'm saying this plan in this house, in my view, is, is reasonable. And I leave it up to you guys to tell us what to do. All right?
Mr. Lynch, I would like to try and appease some people sometimes so, so we don't have so, you know, so much, so much opposition against new people coming into the area also. If somebody's going to build a house there and if, if everyone's not in tune with it, it's always going to be, you know, soreness to all of them down there. So we try and be fair to everybody and but again, like I had stated before, there is going to be a house there built. Whether it's just a little bit smaller or whether this board right now was to approve with the variances.
And, and attorney, I just want to say, if there wasn't so much neighbor opposition, you wouldn't have a problem with me. But you know what I mean? We got to kind of compromise.
I, I, I hear you.
All right, so any, anyone else speaking on this? We've, we've heard from the opposition and who was, who was in favor. So if the commissioners do not have any more questions, I want to close this hearing. We're all set. This hearing's closed. All right, so it looks like we're looking, we're leaning toward a good tonight without prejudice. If I'm correct.
Yeah, I think if they knock, they knock two feet off the width and, you know, maybe six, eight inches off the walkway, I'd be satisfied.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
We have motion to deny without prejudice. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
Motion.
Mr. Sodda?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. Alakid?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion denied without prejudice.
Can I just ask Billy, what was your recommendation?
Mr. Sodda?
Yeah, you caught me walking away.
What is your recommendation?
What was your recommendation again?
I think you said.
I would like twenty-two foot, twenty-two foot wide. And maybe knock about eight inches off that walkway. Make it a forty inch walkway.
Chairman, discussion time is over. Okay. Okay.
I was just giving them my opinion.
You're cutting into our, our meeting, Mr.
I know.
No, no, we can't have any regular talk right now. Maybe later. Hang around. Okay. All right, so, all right, what do we have for new business? Anything?
We have to approve our calendar.
Joe, are you going back to hearing number one?
I'm, what's that?
Aren't you going back to hearing number one?
No, we're not.
Hearing one is being rescheduled to December seventeen.
Mr. Hurst is going to work an extra night. All right, so new business, approval of our twenty twenty-one calendar. And the twenty twenty-one Z B A meeting calendar. I, I believe Meg Green only sent, did, Meg, you didn't send us a paper copy of that, did you?
Not, no, I didn't.
Thirty minutes.
No, it wasn't.
Do you have any intentions on doing it or should we print our own?
I can, no, I can definitely send it out if you like.
I probably with mail next month if everyone's.
Was he just not on your camera or?
All right, we'll have an eleven month calendar.
An eleven month.
Right here.
There it is.
We could tell everybody the date for next month and then you'll get it in your mail next month. How's that? It's going to be an eleven month calendar now.
It, it's on, it'll be on the website if you guys approve it. There were, there were no rescheduled. It was, everything was consistently the second Tuesday of the month. There were no conflicts with holidays or anything.
Right, yeah.
Yellow as you can see.
All right, Meg, you're all right with that? You'll mail it to us next month?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we need a vote to approve it? Go in favor, approve the calendar?
Aye.
Okay, no, no opposition. Old business? Any old business? Staff update?
We have a special meeting December seventeen.
There you go. Acceptance of the minutes for November tenth, two thousand twenty hearing. We read them. Everything looked good. I think we had two hearings that night, right?
December seventeenth?
No, no, it's November tenth. No, November, I'm asking for.
For last month's, Stephen.
Last month.
Prior.
Applications for next month. Beside the special.
Not right now.
No. Okay. I'm sorry for any, anything that I might have caused in the beginning. I have no idea what happened to my computer. Well, thank God I went back to it. It worked. I hope it wasn't too interruptive. Anyway.
No, I apologize for the recording snap boom.
Was it not recording on your side?
No, I, I almost. I usually, I don't hit the record button prior to the meeting because I don't want to record the idle chit chat. Then the meeting got underway and I just forgot to hit record. Then I noticed that when Kevin was halfway through his. And I almost died.
And there's no way you can go through Zoom and get, get a copy of it or not?
No, meetings have to be recorded.
But I know, I mean, but Zoom doesn't.
Okay, so we should be all set. We'll see everybody December seventeen, Thursday, December seventeen.
Joe, I don't have to, I don't even have to go on.
You don't have to, Mr. Sodda, you're, you're recused from that. So unless you, unless you need a night of entertainment, then.
Yeah.
It's, it's absolutely there for you. There's nothing boring about it. I don't know why you want to attend.
Seven o'clock, I assume? Yes.
We'll be, I'll be sending out the Zoom invite before the end of this week.
Okay.
And I believe we'll also have to put the agenda.
We need you to vote on this.
You need me?
Yeah, you're an attorney. You should vote on that.
Well, that has nothing to do, me being a lawyer has nothing to do with it. I'm not.
We cannot, this meeting is still open. We cannot talk about the merits or demerits of it.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, okay. All right, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas or.
Not yet, not yet.
I'm sorry, guys, that we.
We'll all see each other, Kenny.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
We can, we can wish Bill a Merry Christmas.
All right, Bill, Merry Christmas. I'm sorry we can't get together tonight like we have in previous years because that was always fun and enjoyable to do.
Yes.
Drink.
We'll get together somewhere.
Yeah.
Maybe by summertime we'll be over there. We hope so.
Yeah.
All right, we can put something together. All right, guys, have a nice evening.
Good night, everybody.
See you soon.
Good night.